Not just the Kiwanis. We invited the community to this. Again, it's our first of the speaker series. So if you'll look for our announcements in the paper, again, we're looking for people. So if you have ideas, contact us. And there's ways to do that. St. Louis Heroin Health is here tonight through Erica Sunday. I'm gonna point at her while she's taking my picture. And I'm gonna give this to Scott 20 seconds, then let's go back to Erica and she can kind of introduce this group that she's become involved with, who's doing a ton of good. And you probably already know something about it already. Okay? Erica?
Oh, sorry. 20 seconds. Wow. All I want to say is thank you for coming. If you guys, anybody's interested in joining the Kiwanis, which is a great group, if one has not already, I already picked your ear up. There is a tab with two buttons back there. Just put your name and email address, if you feel comfortable, your cellphone number, go ahead and do it. There's pamphlets back there and my business card right there. That's all I'm saying about the Kiwanis tonight, because it's Erica's night.
St. Louis Heroin Health. Well, I'm Erica Sunday. I actually graduated from Columbia High School. I got involved in about August-ish and just a PR person, but after I realized how difficult the teens are having with issues with the illegal drugs, like heroin and, I mean, help me out, because I don't even know the drugs, as I'd say.
Opiates.
Oh, yes, thank you. Painkillers. I mean, and me being on painkillers three years ago, I realized that there was a time in need to change. So I got involved with the group and we go to rallies, Belvedere, then to Redwood, St. Louis, we've had some, Arnold, so we go all over. So I will let everybody then really quick introduce themselves and we'll open there. So enjoy.
How you doing? My name is Phil Lobby and my official role at St. Louis Heroin Health is I'm the Outreach Coordinator. What St. Louis Heroin Health does, we were originally formed by a grieving mother and a grief counselor. And they put this together to help this woman deal with the death of her 18-year-old son, who died in her arms of a heroin overdose. They formed this group to, like I said, help her with the grief of dealing with the loss of her 18-year-old son. It sat, I was a dot com on the internet for about a year and a half. That's when we were approached by John Jared DeCef and Marilyn Smashy. John Jared DeCef is a counselor, grief counselor, and Marilyn Smashy was the mother that lost her son. They approached us and asked us if we would take it over and they basically handed us the keys to this organization. And what our organization is, is a non-for-profit organization. It was basically put together by Chad, a gentleman who's not here by the name of Robert, myself. And what we do is, we're a non-for-profit organization. We have crisis response teams that when someone calls that has an addiction problem or a parent has a problem with their child, they can contact us either by phone or by email. And we respond in a matter of time. Obviously, if it's an addict, we try and respond within an hour or so to where we can set them up into a medical detox center or treatment facilities, be it, well, 30-day treatment facilities are pretty much no longer, 14 to 21-day treatment facilities. We also raise awareness and education within schools. We are trying to get into more schools in Illinois to deal with the faculty and train the faculty on how to recognize drug addiction or drug problems and what to do about it. A lot of it is, if a kid gets caught in school, he obviously is punished via law enforcement. And we're not saying that it's not a crime, but it's also a disease. And we think that, me being a recovering heroin addict, I've been in jail, I've been, you know, in the court systems, but it wasn't until I decided it was time for me to change that I needed to change. And we'll get into how we did that a little later. But basically, our program is like Addicts for Addicts. When an addict approaches with a problem, we send another addict, usually two, out to them to make that initial contact. We also have Parents for Parents, which is parents of addicted children or grieving parents that have lost someone, that has died from heroin or opiate pain pills, and we provide grief counseling. We're guided by a physician-directed board. Like I said, we have the grief counselor, and then we also have the drug addicts that are in recovery, because no one can relate to a drug addict like another drug addict. They don't listen to police officers. They don't, it's, you know, if you come to me and try and explain addiction to me and you haven't been in the trenches where I have been, my mind kind of shuts off to that. So I can relate to Chad like Chad can, you know, relate to me on addiction type stuff. We do social education, and that's a three-pronged series. Like I said, with schools, we're going in there, we're talking to the faculty. Then we're gonna get in, and after we survey the faculty, we're also gonna figure out what the faculty feels that the students need to hear, then we're gonna address the students. Not in a 300-person gymnasium, more in a classroom-type setting, in a health class, something like that, and raise their awareness of prescription drugs and how the disease of addiction progresses. Then we're going to start doing, like, mini-courses on Saturdays at various schools where the parents can come for about four hours and they have four or five different classrooms set up to where you can have, you know, addicts in a classroom, you can have parents of addicts in a classroom, treatment facilities, law enforcement, and, you know, health, like doctors and the types of things to explain treatment, the law enforcement end of it, the recovery end of it, the parents end of it. And, you know, we feel that we can all make an impact on this as long as we're, it's strength in numbers is really what it is. I'm sure there, and I'm gonna go out on a limb here, but addiction, heroin addiction, any kind of drug addiction is a family disease. And there's someone in this room, I'm sure, that is affected by drug addiction, whether it be a cousin, brother, sister, friend, it's present. And I know, being in recovery, that I have affected my families, my friends, friends of friends through my disease of addiction. And that's what a lot of us are gonna talk about here, is how to take care of that and some awareness with a personal story solution. And I'll be back up here with a conclusion. So I'm gonna turn it over to Chad, who's gonna raise awareness on heroin.
Thanks, Phil. My name's Chris Cora, and like Phil said, as he is, I keep everything on front too. I'm a junkie. I just haven't got heroin in a long time. It's always still, it's in my pocket, and I have to always be one, but instead of doing drugs, now we do this. One thing that Phil did leave out is that, another resource we do offer is legal help. We do have an attorney on staff that does take cases for addicts and families of addicts that are dealing with legal consequences from active addiction on a sliding fee and reduce scale rate. Basically, you know, if you sum up everything Phil said and then add in this in, we're trying to be a one-stop, you know, for lack of a better term, one-stop place for people dealing with opiate and heroin addiction, from pre-addiction with awareness, all the way to recovery where we can offer them some more solutions. What, just gonna go through real quick about current statistics of what's kind of happening. Not only Illinois, we're so close to Missouri that the numbers in Missouri are affecting Illinois and basically around the whole country. You know, I think everyone gives the word heroin epidemic pretty much nonstop lately. And there's a good reason, and it should keep on being said like that, because it is an epidemic and it's not just heroin. We're gonna just classify those opiates in general. Currently, in the United States, with the mortality rate that we've been seeing, somebody is dying every 19 minutes from an opiate overdose. And this, you know, there's a lot of judgments about this because a lot of the people that are dying are heroin addicts dying from injecting heroin, but that's not it. Prescription painkillers are the cause of most of these and are the gateway to heroin addiction. Scary number throughout, they're both thrown out there. Ninety-nine percent of all, everyone knows the Vicodin is, you know, hydrocodone, you know, most normal painkiller prescribed. Ninety-nine percent of all the Vicodin that's produced from the whole planet is consumed by the United States. And then oxycodone, which is a little stronger, I think the number's about 78 percent. I mean, that's every country, every person on the planet, we're consuming almost every single narcotic painkiller that is produced for everyone. And that's, that's a scary number, and that's why this is getting so bad. What we're seeing, you know, I have Missouri stats in my head, I apologize because I am from Missouri, but they do deal with Illinois a lot. Basically, they started keeping stats from 1999 up until now, and in 1999, heroin and opiates were not a huge problem. You know, we saw a lot of meth, cocaine, marijuana, alcohol, everything up there. All those other numbers are kind of falling to the wayside, where, you know, top five admissions to treatment in the five years, heroin and opiates were number five. There's been, in Missouri and in Illinois, about 682 percent increase in ten years, where heroin and opiates are now the number three reason for admission to treatment. The waiting list for admissions to treatment currently is 90 percent heroin, people waiting to get into treatment for heroin addiction. The mortality rate has also gone up about 380 percent. Valuable News Democrat usually does a yearly article about the amount of deaths, and the numbers are still staying about the same. Where in Missouri, we're looking at, you know, close to 600 people, and in Illinois, it's about 200 people, right on this side of the river. For the whole state of Missouri, and I guess I'm using Missouri here, but to give you an example, a good number is that from 1999 to 2009, from opiates, we included painkillers, heroin, everything, the mortality number was 5,672. So that's 500 people a year that are dying. And again, it's not just drug addicts. You know, grandma has dementia, has extremely strong pain pills and takes one, if you get you took another one, you know, stuff kills you, plain and simple. You know, I think almost everyone on this side of the room has overdosed and been brought back. So that's, that's kind of what we're like, I ran out. And then as Phil said, and this is something I stress nonstop, that this is a disease. And how this happens is it's progressive. There's four criteria for something to be considered a disease, like cancer, heart disease, anything, any, all diseases are primary, not caused by anything else, progressive and terrible and fatal. Why this disease is progressive is because it does start with one or two pain pills. You know, you get a prescription from the doctor, everyone's died, you know, and then, you know, but we're drug addicts, so we operate in a little different way in our brains and our bodies. Okay? So, you know, we take one or two and we start building a tolerance. We take three or four, we need five or six. And this is how it progresses, because one or two just doesn't do it anymore to get the feeling, three or four doesn't do it to get that feeling, we need five or six. At one point, in my active addiction, because I started on pain pills also, I was up to about 50 Vicodins a day. And that's a lot of freaking Vicodins. Now, what happens to us? Now, you know, we call everyone else in this room, even though, you know, with no offense, we call you people normies. Okay? What happens is that we have an allergy, okay? What happens is when I put an opiate in my body, it hijacks my brain. Same thing with alcohol, methamphetamines, cocaine, it doesn't matter, we have a physical allergy to the drug we put in our body, and all our brain fixates on is the next high. And this is neuroscience here, but it's proven because our brains are rewired. So if I get high before I eat, I get high before I go do something, even if it's just the start. I take a couple Vicodins because they were prescribed, and I have that allergy and I go do something, I'm rewiring my brain to train me that before I do this, I get high. So by the time we get to the point where we switch over to heroin and we're shooting dope, there's no choice. You know, Joe's gonna tell a little bit of the story, but I'll give you a quick rundown. I was Cook County Prosecutor Attorney up in Chicago. I know, very well-educated. My father built Gateway Rehab, which is, you know, right there. So I came from a family that knew addiction. So everyone looked at me like, "You should have known better." Like, "Yeah?", but I was sick, because, you know, I had prescription painkillers and they took me. And by the time I switched from painkillers to heroin, there wasn't, I ran out of painkillers, I was dope sick, I drove right to the west side of Chicago to get heroin. It wasn't even, it wasn't even thought process. It was just what I did, just what I had to do, because my brain was fixated on the next high. So that's how this, that's how it happens to most of us. But some things to look out for, because for the awareness part, is what's gonna happen, is that if you have this allergy and you start taking pain pills, you could go down this road. And this, the signs that we tell people to look out for are pretty much the same for all opiates. You know, heroin would be a little more extreme on Sunday night and out, and long-sleeve shirts in the winter. But basically, you know, everything's the same. She's very, I don't need it, but I'm gonna refer to it. Okay, I know it'll make Robert happy. My little cheat sheet. You know, oh, I mean, granted, you're banging dope. You know, the science would think are pretty much, you know, kind of all known, if ever we've seen a couple movies. You know, we wore long-sleeve t-shirts, it was 120 degrees outside. We lose a lot of weight, we stop eating, you know. Money, money goes missing, you're very diuretic pupils. Since heroin, what heroin does, just a quick rundown of the chemistry, is that it's a central nerve, it's a respiratory depressant. So you have opiate receptors in your brain, and when you put heroin in there, it tells your body to slow down and stop breathing. So this delayed breathing brings you into like a state of consciousness unconsciousness, and we call that night and out. So you see somebody fall asleep and waking up, fall asleep and waking up. That's a heroin habit. You get very itchy, you get very hot, it's very difficult to go to the bathroom. And the obvious, money's missing, grades are dropping in schools if you have students. And all these little signs are indicators, and they can be a precursor to somebody moves their pain pills to heroin. We always ran errands. I was, I always had to leave the house. I had to go do something. It was always alive, I'm running to Best Buy, I'm running to the gas station, you know. It would take me two hours to run down the street to get a pack of smokes, because drug dealers were never on time. And I'd be waiting for them. I'm five minutes away when they haven't left their house yet. One of the biggest things we do in our addiction is we isolate, though. That's something, you know, you'll see somebody that used to be popular, used to like to hang out all the time with people, and they slowly start pouring away from that. Now, this can happen even before we pick up, because all of us like to isolate in our youth. You know, some of my better memories of growing up was I was alone in my room, my own thoughts, which, you know, nowadays I realize that my brain is a dangerous place, I don't go there alone. But until I realized that, I didn't know that it made me sick. And then, of course, the obvious, missing spoons, track marks. Lack of hygiene. Yeah, I think, I think one time I was shot with about a month. You just don't have the energy, you just don't care. You know, things, all that matters, and, you know, as much as we love our family, as much as I wanna make up for a lot of things I did to them in active addiction when I was using, none of that's okay. All that mattered was not being dope sick, because being sick is probably the worst thing. It's horrible. And, but there are options, there are treatment options. There's been a whole new revolution in some medical assisted treatments. There's organizations like Us Now, which weren't around two years ago, where you can pick up the phone and get somewhere within a half an hour from the area. If not, within two hours, you can get somewhere safe. And there's people to talk to now, and we're trying to just, you know, one of the biggest messages I bring on a personal level is that this is a disease, we're sick. There's a fine line of responsibility that we have to accept and make up for the things we did, but at the same time, we did those things when we were under the influence. And a lot of the decisions we made, the bad ones, were based on a brain that just wasn't functioning right. And, you know, the saying we use, and, you know, we're not responsible for it, because we didn't responsible for our recovery. And one of the things I challenge people to do is to start having some compassion. You know, we're not asking you to forgive the crime and the lying and all the stuff that goes with it, but to have some compassion that people are sick and they need help. And if given the proper treatment and proper time to recover, they can do something positive. Because, you know, we were all competitors at one point, and we may not, should not want to be in the same room. And everybody, their life's helping other people. So given the opportunity, they can change. So, you know, we don't want to excuse the behavior, but we wanna understand where it comes from, and that we will, in our own lives, we'll be held responsible for the things we did and we'll make up for them, but, you know, we need help. So there will be plenty of time for questions and answers when we're done, but, you know, that's basically just how things progress and what we're working on. But to give you a quick, just story about where he came from and how he got here today, Joe's gonna talk just for a little bit.
My name's Joe and I'm a heroin addict. There we go. Let's try that again. My name's Joe and I'm a heroin addict. That makes it a little more homely for me. Normally, I'm used to sitting down telling my story, but I'm almost like... So it started off when I was about 15. I was experimenting with alcohol and marijuana. And then at about 16 or 17, me and my best friend stumbled upon my grandmother's pill drawer, and we, we took about five of each of the pills and put them in a large bag and got on the internet and found out what each of them was supposed to do. And we divvied them up amongst me and all my friends, and they were kind of a good time at that point. And we didn't really realize what we were getting into, we didn't really know anybody that had taken pills, but there was one certain one amongst the pills, and it was oxytocin in like a special blue container. And I told all my friends, "You guys can have all the rest of them, I don't want anything to do with those, but you can't have any of these." It's like, like, "These are mine." And, and soon the pills were gone, and I, I didn't put two and two together that, that was what I liked. We went out experimenting with kind of everything under the sun, and soon I hung out with a group of about 10 people, and heroin was being introduced to me on a nightly basis. There was a tray of heroin going around the house every single night. And all my friends were like, "Don't snort it, it's not addictive, we're not dirty addicts shooting up, and, and you won't get addicted, and, and this is a fun thing to do." So I began snorting heroin with a group of 10 other people, and I liked it a lot. We continued to do that for about two months without any consequences, and we all, we all seemed to get some money together and we had a big weekend where that was all we did. We all shut our phones off and locked ourselves in this room, and this was an idea of a good time. Us, completely away from society, doing heroin seemed like a really good idea, that seemed like a fun time. And looking back on it, that, that's kind of messed up in itself to think that that's okay, that, that nothing else, like, like cutting myself off from my loved ones and just doing what I wanted to do was, was kind of messed up. But we did heroin all weekend long, and then Monday, it came time to go to work, and a couple of us worked together and we were at each other's throats. And we couldn't figure out why, and then pretty soon, somebody put their finger on it, like, "The heroin, it's bad, we're not doing that anymore." So all nine of my friends quit, but I couldn't. That, "Why do you guys wanna feel any other way but this?" That, that was my aha moment in life. That was how I wanted to feel, and I would have done anything it took in order to continue that. It was about this time I got into my first rehab. I've been to seven treatment centers, and, and they asked me if they thought I had a problem with it, and I had never tried to quit, and I didn't think I had a problem. I wound up meeting up with a girl in that rehab and she taught me how to shoot up. I did a location change and moved back in with my parents, trying to find some, some kind of peace 500 miles away, where I wouldn't know where to get heroin. So I moved back in with my parents, I have stayed from doing heroin for about six months, and as soon as it, it was in my face, I, I did it again. And this time, it was a six-month spree, and my family started catching on to it. I lost jobs, I totaled cars, and they were wondering, "Hey, what's going on with you?" And they slowly picked up on it, they asked to see my arms, and then it was back to treatment again, and I kind of knew the routine by this point, and it was the same thing. Every, every fall, I would lose everything. Summer, I would use all summer, and fall, it would all come tumbling down. Winter, I would build it back up and then just do the same vicious cycle and wind up in treatment center in fall. Well, eventually, my family got pretty tired of what I was doing and kicked me out. I was homeless for the last year of my using. I had two jobs, I had two cars, and I had friends that kept telling me to try to get clean, and, and I wasn't able to hear. It was, I was doing good in my eyes, I had all these things, I had things going for me, I wanted to get into school, but I could not quit using heroin. My, my daily routine was wake up, go wait at my dope man's house for two hours, go to work, and have some for when I got off work, and that wasn't always the case. I would have to borrow $20 two days before the pay period in order to have enough gas to get to work. And, and that was my life. I went to work and I got high. My family, they were pretty much just immune to, like, "We don't want anything to do with you, we have to protect your little brothers from, from seeing you destroy yourself." I have two little brothers who are 14 and 15, and they watched me go through everything. And toward the end of 2010, yeah, 2010, I had sold my car to the dope man for about $900 worth of dope. I was homeless, my best friend overdosed with some dope I gave him, and I was kind of just streetwalking, and I, I took some of the money that I got from selling my car and I, I sat in a, in a motel room by myself, and I planned on detoxing and going to a six-month treatment program. My mom picked me up on my 21st birthday while I was sitting in that hotel room, and she took me out to breakfast and gave me the biggest hug I ever got, and she said, "What is it gonna take for you to stop?" And, and my thinking was, "Oh, my stuff, I'm like, this isn't that bad." She's like, she wouldn't pull into the motel I was living at, because it was that bad of an area, I had to walk down the street to hop in her car, because she wouldn't, she wouldn't pull in there. And, and my thinking was just, it's gonna take jail for me, for me to finally plan on my act here to see what I'm doing is wrong. My best friend overdosed two days after this, and he died, he was 19. And I, for a long time, I felt responsible, because that's part of the heroin game. I'm gonna try and make this look as appealing as possible to get you to do it, so I can middleman you, and I can get money out of you or more drugs. And, and he died. For some reason, I was still alive and I had been doing it three years longer than him. And I've overdosed three times, I totaled seven cars, I've been to seven rehabs, and, and pretty much, people were sick of me, I didn't have any friends. And my family gave me the option to go to treatment, they're like, "You gotta wanna go to treatment." And, and it was, at this point, I was willing to try anything. I said a little foxhole prayer, because I was finally opening my eyes to what I was doing. This was not where I planned on being. I realized I was in a hole that I didn't see any way out of, and there were a lot of people around who had been through similar situations. I go to 12-step organizations, and today I have a little over two years clean from all mind-altering substances. I actively give back to the community and develop programs like this, and try to help people out of the hopeless situation that I found myself in. I came to St. Louis with a suitcase full of some raggedy clothes, and I tried something new this time. I did what other people told me to do instead of what I wanted to do. Today, I, I have a car, I have a condo, I have a business, and there is hope, and today I can give that hope back to other people who want a way out of that, and that's kind of what we're here for, is if you start using that, it's not the end of the road. It is kind of a difficult journey, but the best way to not get in my position is not to do what I did, so that's why we try to bring awareness, so you don't have to go through what I did. That's all I got.
So, you know, you see all the stuff on the news, you know, crack heroin, rallies and that support, you know, I mean, I'll just, probably don't definitely, we can't, you know, we can't do anything about the supply. What we try to focus on is contributions to the problem, because if we take away the demand, then eventually the supply will lose. So, you know, we're left with like, what are we, what are we gonna do? And the most real important things is education and awareness, and real education, not anything fear-based or lie-based, like some of us, like myself, had a dare program when we were growing up, and they didn't teach me anything but what drugs were for. You know, they didn't tell me, you know, what, "You're going to do this, and it's okay. And if you happen to have this allergy, you're gonna need help, and this is what you're gonna get help." So that's one of the things we're trying to do, because you can't stop. So that's one of the things we're trying to do because if you can't stop, somebody can take it out of my own hands. Or we can't stop the thirty year old that goes to the doctor for a back injury and gets hooked on like it, it's gonna happen. So what, what's, there's some real answers out there. Real answers and one thing I want to say about Joe because it's an amazing story and it's true. This is like cancer sometimes too. Because sometimes people need more than one chemotherapy, more than one radiation therapy. And just like him, my first time in rehab was December seventh, two thousand and seven. And my clean date is June ninth, two thousand and eleven. So, you know, three and a half years of going to treatment before it finally sunk in because treatment takes time to work. And again, there's no like, oh, let's not blame them because, yeah, we gotta make up for that stuff like I said earlier. But there has to be some real compassion, understanding that it takes time to heal from this type of sickness. Because this isn't, this is a spiritual sickness, so it's not anything that, you know, we've ever encountered before. Um, you have two laws here in Illinois that, you know, we're working on in Missouri, but since we're in Illinois, I want you to know you have them. You know, I tell everyone here and you tell one person, they tell one person. Because right now the implementation of these laws is very important. The first one you have is called nine eleven, that's a narrative. Uh, from ten states now, what that law says is that if you're with somebody and you're using and they overdose and you call nine one one for help, they're not gonna get arrested for possession. What used to happen in the olden days, if, if Joe and I were hanging out and I fell out of overdose, um, and he called nine one one. The paramedics would come and they would inject me with what's called naloxone and Narcon, which reverses opioid overdoses. And then after you're unconscious, they would hack us up and arrest me for possession of controlled, controlled stuff, just for the drugs that were in my body. I don't want to be in prison, so I would tell them not to call nine one one and throw me in the shuttle. Okay, but that, that was old school later on. It's not even fair to call for help. You also have Narcon, naloxone available in Illinois. Um, not that far away in Belleville, there's a needle exchange program called Bethany's Place. And if you sit through about a fifteen minute video presentation, you can get Narcon to take home and keep with you. Now, this just isn't for the heroin addict. It's for limited pain pills. Something can happen with any opiate. And this drug can be on hand to reverse that and save somebody's life. Um, it can't be abused, um, it can't get you high. The only purpose this drug does is it knocks out, uh, cleans out the receptors in your brain that have taken opiates. It's about as harmful as taking two Advil. And it costs about two dollars a dose to save somebody's life. And again, what we, uh, what we do is treatment, understanding and continuing education. To let people know what, how serious the problem is out there, uh, with the pain, pain pills. Um, I mean, you know, we don't have all the answers, we just know what helped us. You know, and, you know, without naming the specific one because we really can't. You know, most of us found our recovery in the rooms of twelve step program. Uh, but, you know, we're at the point where whatever it takes right now to get somebody some cleaning time. You know, there's some treatment options that are now available that they didn't have before. Okay, um, and just to keep you the information, so you have it, they have a drug out called Vivitrol, uh, which is a monthly shot, um, which blocks your opioid receptors in your brain. So if you inject, you type of, you inject heroin or take a pain pill, they can't, you can't, it passes the blood brain barrier, but it doesn't attach to those receptors, so you can't get high. You know, the, the, the physical cravings are very bad when it comes to opiates and heroin. But the mental obsession is what gets every single one of us. Because it's like we have this fire inside us, it's kind of like, uh, kindling just a little bit and we think about using it. But if we think about it too much, it turns into this just raging inferno and we can't control it. I mean, as much as I want to take responsibility, because I, I take responsibility for feeding those thoughts. But once that, I'm engulfed by that inferno, I, my, my right to choose, my self-will, everything is out the window. There's no way you can really explain it to the normies. Um, you know, it's like the last piece of chocolate cake. You really don't want to take a bite, but something just makes you do it, you really didn't want to do it. Time's up by about a million. And that's what's driving us to kill ourselves. Okay, but there is help available nowadays, not only us out there, you know, there's, uh, National Council, I call it, just has their own, not even once campaigned. Uh, there's little, I guess, subgroups forming all over the country. New Jersey, people I work with in New Jersey, Florida, California, Detroit. We're all trying to battle this. And as Phil said in the open, the only thing that's gonna really help is power and numbers. You know, so if we all stick together and demand more treatment options, uh, more education, real education, and outlets for people to, that need the information to get it, then we can actually make a difference. So I think that's the bulk of our presentation, but we do have time left, so we wanted to leave it specifically, uh, for you to ask me, Phil, Joe, anybody, any questions about what we've done. And Erica did have one thing to add in.
Yes.
About something that can really help with the prescription pain pill problem.
Yes.
Uh, because a lot of them are leftover in the cabinet.
Yes. Um, Joe Edwards, our chief police here in Columbia was unable to attend, but he did send me an email to remind everyone that there is a drop box in the lobby at the police department. Anyone can discard their old or unused medication in the lobby twenty-four hours a day. They do not need to remove the labels or take them out of the bottle or their boxes. They can just deposit them in the box and we will have them incinerated. Thanks a lot, Joe.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna touch on a couple of things, uh, in conclusion, what was your question? Uh, the website, which the, the girls passed out, is, uh, stlousheroinhelp.org. If you're on Facebook, it's just St. Louis Heroin Help. Um, and we can set you up with that if you can find us on Facebook. Um, or you go to the website and then there is a link on the website to the Facebook page. Um, it's a resource for information as well as, on the website, you can, there's, at the top, there's a tab that says Ask Addicts. Um, it's, or Ask a Question Anonymously and that gets emailed to Chad, myself, or Robert, who, I heard somebody wants to see Robert with all his tattoos all over him. Um, he's, uh, he's working, but, uh, you know, in a twelve step organization, they have what, what they call sponsors. Um, and Robert is my sponsor and to hear his story, it's a complete turnaround from where he was to where he is today. Um, and I know he's not here, so I'm not gonna really talk too much about him. Um, but, uh, the website, you can get in there, you can link up with people. Um, if you are affected by the disease of addiction, do not hesitate to get on there and ask questions. We'll, we can, we'll answer to the best of our ability. If we can't, we will refer you to somebody that can. Um, the prescription drop box that she's talking about, my history is I was a St. Louis city paramedic for thirteen years before I gave it back to addiction. Um, I can tell you stories about where we've had kids go in and get into the medications and die because, you know, grandma's, grandma's cancer medications are in the, in the medicine cabinet. We all know that medications look like candy. To a kid, they're gonna think it's a gummy bear. And it's actually something, you know, some sort of medication that to a kid, they take two or three of them and may kill them. I've seen that. Um, we used to dispose of them with the city of St. Louis, we'd throw them in sharp boxes because it got really expensive to dispose of them. So we'd just get them incinerated with that. That's very important with the police department having a prescription drop, uh, container there. Um, there's one other department in Missouri, which is the Kirkwood Police Department that does that. Um, also, yeah, there's a saying over in St. Louis, it's, uh, start snitching, save the hood. If you are aware in your community, um, that there is, you know, no drug house, nuisance properties, um, you can contact, I'm sure the chief of police here would be more than happy to hear about it. If not, you can contact MEGSI, which is the Drug Task Force Unit over here in Illinois. You can contact the state police for that. Um, and you gotta understand, if you, just because you, if you have made these phone calls, just because you don't see anything happening immediately doesn't mean that it's not happening. Um, obviously, they're gonna do some investigations and possibly, you know, eventually they're gonna wind up kicking in the door. Eventually, if they have enough evidence to do that. Is that gonna solve the problem? No, it'll take it out of your neighborhood for a little while. Um, so if you have any other questions or anything, you can ask women, men, anything.
One more thing though, before we... Is that better? Uh, one more thing, you know, about again, what can we do? Here, I think she wants, here's one, please, she wants to do this. Um, one thing, um, that we, you can do, and I know this is gonna sound weird and maybe it won't work this generation, but maybe we can start it now, is go home, tell your kid, it's okay. I know you're going to try these things. Okay? We had, I'll tell, I'm gonna tell a quick, really sad story right now, so sorry to end it on a sad note. We had a kid pass away in St. Louis, uh, last summer, uh, because they, they weren't scared about calling the cops, they weren't scared about calling the ambulance, they were upstairs parked in his room, the kid overdosed. They were too scared to tell mom and dad. So they lowered the bed sheet out of the window and took him to the hospital. And if they had just run downstairs and told mom and dad what happened, could have saved a kid's life. So that fear of admitting that I'm sick, I mean, it kept me sick for many years. All of us, you know, the shame of, I'm a drug addict, you know. Whatever we can do to eliminate that and destroy that shame and stigma of addiction, we need to do. And right now, the best thing I can say is that to start talking about it. Be like, listen, I'm not an idiot, you know. You're gonna, you're gonna be high, so you're gonna pop pills, you're gonna try this. To get to the point where you feel like you're losing control, there's help available and mom and dad aren't going to kick you out or hate you. They're gonna love you even more and help you because you're sick. You know, that's something that I think is, uh, important and, and once, I know it's a way to really try to get done. Because, you know, mom and dad are idiots when we're fourteen, fifteen years old. And they're not gonna believe you because I think the car's gone and stuff, but, I mean, you gotta do something. Shame is, the shame is killing people, plain and simple, so we need to just stop. There's no more rock stars than Ali's, you know, that's not how it is anymore. You know, it's in the bathroom, it's a junior high. I mean, and the only way to stop is by accepting that it's here and loving and trying to help, you know. Our code that we have is love and tolerance. So we want to share that with everyone here, so I guess that's it.
Great question.
The, the drug that an addict takes to, uh, take your brain away from the drug, so to speak. Uh, you said there's a fire burning, does that put that fire out or do you still want, you still want it, but you know, it won't do any good to take it? Or how, how does that all work?
Uh, that drug does work somewhat on the, uh, physical cravings. It does remove them a little bit, but also take it with the option to get high, then there's no point in feeding that obsession. So, and, but they're also by, the, the first, I'd say three to six months or first one day to six months in recovery from heroin addiction. Is, and I've been addicted to every drug over two man, uh, more than once. And I'll say this, the heroin grabs your soul a little bit more than the others. So that, that, that physical craving and that obsession, you know, we advise you to time to work on tools, uh, you know, coping skills and tools, uh, that will prevent you from going back out there. Because the goal, the goal of life is, my personal goal is, is my program of recovery, I don't want to be dependent on anything anymore. But, you know, it does help with the physical cravings a little bit, but also knowing you can't get high. You kind of try not to obsess about it. And you kind of just be a little cautious to, to keep on moving forward and cope.
And the names of those medications, one of them is Suboxone, Sevotex. Um, they generally prescribe that, like you said, early in recovery, um, in a medical assist, assisted detox. It takes away some of the sickness and it also blocks the opioid receptors so that the opiates cannot be absorbed if, if you take it prior to being in withdrawal, uh, because you get super sick. It tends, we call it dope sick, but what dope sick is, is basically flu like symptoms times a thousand. I mean, and, and the cure is more opiates, but for people like us, we're allergic to that, so we can't have that. The other medication that they generally follow up the Suboxone with in medical assisted therapy is called Vivitrol. And that's, it blocks the, the receptors, so the heroin or the opiates do not get absorbed, so you do not get high. Uh, but they also recommend that you follow that up with a twelve step organization or some sort of spiritual program. Because basically, the theory is if you, if you take a horse thief and you sober up a horse thief, you just got a really good horse thief. He's not drunk anymore. But if you work on the, the horse thief problem too, as well as the alcohol problem, now you're attacking it, the solution's there. Um, so, and most, most of those medications, there's a couple of facilities over in Missouri that prescribe those. Um, and it's, it's expensive, so a lot of them are, are, are insurance type providers. But, um, there are some state programs that are available for, like the probation and parole, that you can get on those. Um, and they use it for alcohol too. And it's an injection, the, the Vivitrol is a twenty-eight day injection and then every twenty-eight days you'll get it.
Is it cheaper than heroin?
Uh, in the long run, yes.
Wow, yeah.
Well, let's think about this, okay, the Vivitrol without insurance is a thousand dollars a shot. Okay, so that's a month.
Thirty days, right?
Twenty-eight days. Um, at my worst point, my heroin habit was four hundred dollars a day.
I could go through that in two, three days.
Wow.
So, yeah. But the point, the, 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 the real, the kicker is that when I get to the point when I need the Vivitrol and I want it and I'm done banging dope, all the money's gone.
Oh, yeah.
Because, you know, we, we, we have a saying, you know, um, that, you know, um, we fear change, you know. This disease is based on self-centered fear and one of the things we fear is change. So we have a saying, when the pain of staying the same is finally greater than the fear of change, we're finally gonna do something in our lives. We need to bank as, because we're stubborn by, I mean, we're a cultural race as addicts, but wherever we are, we're very stubborn. And I need to bang my head against a wall thirty times before I get it. And what we're trying to do now is to lower everybody's bottom, I guess. Or raise, raise the bottom, sorry. Raise everybody's bottom so you don't have to get to the point where you've lost, it's really ten, thirteen years of DMT and can't do it anymore. Really can't be a lawyer anymore. We, we just, we don't want, we want people to learn from our path and not have to walk.
Anyway.
Um, I'm just curious, for someone who's new, like if, if I know somebody who just started using and I refer to them to you or I, you know, somebody comes to you who's new, do you have a way of approaching them? Because I'm, I'm thinking that they would say, well, I'm not like you guys, you know, they, they, it'd be hard to reach them, I would think.
One of the things I concentrate on when I deal with someone that's new, um, and I'll, I'll use my son as an example. I just got a cough from my son Thursday. He's drinking cough syrup, okay? Um, I took him to meetings, he needs to diagnose himself as a drug addict. What do I think? Yeah, he has this disease, it was passed on genetically, that's my opinion. Um, I tell him to concentrate on similarities, not the differences. The similarities in my story that are in his story. Um, and there's gonna be something, you know, you know. And it could be as simple as, so when you pick up heroin, can you just set it down and then you give it time? You know, and he's gonna tell you, if he's honest, that's the whole key to this, is we're here as honesty. Um, he's gonna tell you, no. Well, then right there opens the door on, see, you're just like I am. When I pick up heroin, I'm not, I can't tell you where I'm gonna be, where I'm gonna wake up, what jail I'm gonna visit in the, in the interim, who I'm gonna rip off, whatever, you know. And that, we, we just bring it to, I mean, in the programs, we have high bottoms and low bottoms. I personally am low bottom. I, I, I think it's completely normal on street cleaning day to move my house. Most people on street cleaning day move their car, I move my house, you know. So people, it, it, it's just different, we can relate to them like nobody else can. There's just certain things that we can talk about that they're gonna be like, like he said, the dope man is never on time. Everybody that's ever done dope can relate to that, you know. And, and that's how we open that door. And then once we get that door open, then we can work our way into it. Invite them to some twelve step meetings and, uh, see if they, if they get it. Um, unfortunately, I've been playing around with the program for twenty years. Um, I've got, I'll have two years clean coming up here. Um, and that's after many relapses. But, uh, you know, eventually it, it sets in someone, you know, something clicks in them. You may not get it the first time, but to be able to know that they have a resource out there like us to relate, that, that they're not alone. And that's just like with parents. I mean, there's organizations for parents that are affected by addictions. Um, you know, not to endorse any one, but Al-Anon, Nar-Anon, there's Hope, there's Grasp, there's a couple of various different ones. They're all twelve step based, but they're twelve step based on enabling relationships. And, and you get in there and, you know, I don't know what it's like to have a child die from, from a drug overdose. And I, I've heard of God that I don't have to witness that. But there's someone in that room that does know and they can relate to that. And it, it's just the therapeutic value of one person that's been through the same experience that you have been through helps.
Yeah, and, you know, same thing, resource, resource, resource. If they sit down and talk to you, you know, I mean, lots of times, you know, sister, you can't lie to us. And if you lie to me and I know you are and I'm playing along with it, because I know where you're at. You know, I was a lawyer criminal on the counter, so I can start along with you. Um, but so I'm gonna do those things where we meet with people that are new and I sit there, I'm like, yes, tell me more. Oh, tell me, oh, you don't have a problem, well, you're just doing this, you're just doing that. And, you know, we placate them a little bit and, but we give them, probably where they're headed, what's gonna happen. And another ten times you're right. And, but the biggest thing that I told them is that now they have an house. And it's not mom or, again, you know, that's a shitty thing, but it's not mom and dad, it's not the police. It's a, you know, you've got these guys that are willing to help me. So we hope that within some talks we do, like the one where they, that your kid will be there, I was talking to him the whole time. We're hoping that in six months he calls us, because you know what, I need some help. But, you know, that wasn't, that was here, it's been ever since I... But you know, that wasn't, that was here, it's been ever since nineteen thirty-four, that option has been out there for alcoholics and addicts. But we are quitting on the public stage now, so people don't have to sit at home like what I do. You go on the internet, you type in heroin, St. Louis, you find us two services. Because we don't want people to have to sit there and wonder, am I getting died or just somebody else? Also, kind of, they don't mind their own insurance and their family. Nobody should, no, nobody that wants to recover should buy an active addiction.
Yeah, I just had a question, um, coming from an addict, is there like a point where you think that a parent or, you know, whoever's house you were living at, it, it was time to like kick them out as far as how long to allow them to stay in the house?
Joe, can take that one.
You know, it's like enough is enough, and then they move out, and then you say, okay, come back if you promise to get clean, and you find out they're not. I mean, when, when is it time to say enough is enough, that's it?
I can only speak on my experience. There was a point when I was homeless, I was kinda walking the streets, and I was willing to tell my parents anything it would take, or anybody for that matter, to get into a warm place to sleep. And nobody would let me in, and that's kinda what woke me up to what I was really doing. My parents told me the streets are the best place for you. And that's kinda hard to hear, and there was a lot of anger attached to that. But when I look back at it now, that was one of the kinda defining moments. Like, damn, my own parents won't even let me back in my house, or their house. Because they're worried what I might do, I've become that unpredictable. I've told them so many lies and broke the trust, that there's, there's just no trust, and they were done giving me chances. So I mean, there needs to be a healthy boundary of, I have to do this for me. And addicts are really creative, and when they want something, like you wanna get clean, it, it's gonna be difficult. But, but you'll be able to see the effort they put into it, once they really want it. And, and decide to make that their main focus instead of getting high, because I know I could get high every day. Why can't I work on being clean every day? And once, family members and friends started seeing me go down a different road, you start building that trust back. And you kinda got to take it on an individual case.
And there are other options if, if you experience this and you don't want them in your house. You know, you can set up those healthy boundaries. There are organizations out there, halfway houses, three-quarter houses, that if they're willing to go into those, you're gonna have to stay clean and sober to get in there, and you're gonna have to do some action to stay there, pay rent, get a job, those type of things. And that could be, you know, an icebreaker. One thing that, that you're gonna hear from a drug addict in treatment or in jail is, whatever you want me to say to you, so you're gonna open your door and come and get me out of here.
And the best thing my family ever did for me was come along, plain and simple, the best thing. And there was no more phone calls, and you know, there was, there was six last times. There were probably ten, this is the last time, this is the last, but you know what, I knew it wasn't the last time, because I can read people.
Well, I'm getting a lot of slack for that, because I've done that, and it's really hard for me, but people around me think that I'm just like being cold, like a, like a cold mother, and how could you kick such-and-such out? And it's like, because I can't watch it, I can't watch her go through that, you know. I, I feel like that's the only way that she, because I know that she really wants to seek my approval on a lot of stuff, but I, you know, I just, yeah.
And here's the thing, you know, my parents are dead, passed away a few years ago, earlier before my addiction. My only real family, that was blood, is my sister, and you know, she's the one that finally cut me off. And I've been clean almost two years, and she still won't speak to me, and I still love her to death for what she did, and respect that she won't speak to me. But that's because I have some clarity, and understand how dangerous and manipulative and sick I was, that she needs that time to heal. So, and whatever slack you get, that's what they're gonna make you. You know, once, you know, there's no, I died, it wasn't a bottom. I've been homeless, it wasn't a bottom. I've been in jail, it wasn't a bottom. What normies think is a bottom, is not a physical place. Bottom is a spiritual place inside where I'm done. I look in the mirror and I can't stand what I see anymore, and I'm finally ready to do anything I will do to get clean. That's our bottom. Because, you know, I've heard it a million times, well, your drug dealer came in and he took your five thousand dollar TV. Having learned your lesson, there's no lesson to be learned. I was in a ER overdosed, and was dope sick when I woke up and ran out half naked to get more dope, because I was dope sick. That didn't stop me, friends dying, first time I did dope was at eighteen. Every single person I grew up with that we went down, we'll get there, is dead. That will not stop us from getting high, the only thing that is gonna stop us from using is us.
And I can give you some more resources afterwards, as far as maybe setting up with some parents. I've got a question over here, and then before, and then I'll get back to you.
I know everybody has a lot, we thank you very much on behalf of the Wannas Club, for your elusive, you know, beautiful way of putting this all together for us. And this is a town of neighbor, and you're pretty naive, and I think you call us normies under, because I never really thought that we had such a thing in town. Is there something in Monroe County that we need to know about that we can help with?
With St. Louis heroin help, you can get involved via the website. You can get on there, if you'd like to volunteer, we can have, you go in and, and we can basically task you with different types of tests that we do. We go out and do rallies with other parents and things where they go out and they hold up signs to raise awareness on heroin in that town. There's one coming up in Caseyville, I believe it was March ninth, March ninth. And we don't, this is kinda a weird area here. We get involved with them, and we're there to help the addicts. If someone was in need of help, we're there to, to give them the help. We can also give you some more information on the pamphlets about that, if you'd like to be involved. As far as in Illinois, what we try and do with the parents, is we set parents up with parents. We also need youth people on crisis intervention teams where we'll train you, and we go out in a team, and it's two. And you're in the front lines, you're picking up a drug addict from some roach motel and giving them a ride to the hospital.
You can also set up some of these more, this was a general overview of everything, but if you want to talk in more specific, like you have in the back that it had a, the parents with active addicts, the parents with active recovery, the parents that just want general questions. I mean, you know, anything that needs to be addressed, or the real education, real awareness, and then you can talk to any of the ladies over here, and we can get something going.
I just wanted to say something about this, to address this mom's question. A lot of people pass judgment on people who are dealing with family members who are addicts, but they'll never understand until it happens to them. And that is why it's so important to join some group. Al-Anon meetings have caught up to two thousand thirteen, been out, let people talk about drug addiction in there, and not just alcoholism. Because they pretty much mirror each other. So there's Al-Anon meetings all the time, mostly at church, every day of the week, in the hours of the day. And then there are specific parent meetings for heroin and opiate addiction that are starting up, that aren't far from here. The one that I go to is on Monday nights over at St. Anthony's Hospital, it's in that Anthony House. And those are parents who are dealing with exactly what you're dealing with, so you can bounce ideas off of each other, get support from each other, see what's worked, what hasn't worked. Just kinda get together with people who know exactly where you are and what you're going through. And it really, really helps you in any decision you make. Most of these programs don't force you to make decisions, if they do, you should probably find a different meeting. It just lets you feel enabled and okay in any decision that you make for yourself.
I didn't know that was you back there, Katie, but that's who I would have referred you to. First, and our, the Al-Anon of an R-Anon, and the other support groups for families.
Um, I just have a comment with that, and then a question. I have also found that if, by educating myself on how to deal with all that as a mother, you educate your friends, and then they slowly become to realize that you're doing the right thing. So, that's, that's a really good way to handle it too. My other question is, you talked about all these deaths in Missouri and Illinois. Is there any kinda stat that shows the ones that have passed away, if it, if they had been in treatment centers or had not? You know what I'm saying, like if they've been going three to five times, and is there any kinda stats that show that?
I can get access to certain things, but because of HEFLI, I can't get the treatment records. But, you know, you can, you can, you hear the stories, and you know, what, not all overdoses make it, because, you know, a, a big majority of us die from suicide. Because we can't live that life anymore. Because of that nighting effect I spoke about, when you use a perfect example, people drown fastly or go into car accidents. So a lot of the overdoses don't make the papers. But you can look at pretty much the age and the situation, and a good, a close friend of ours that works with us is the mayor of Wentzville, Missouri. And his niece Megan Ramshaw was her second time using. So when you look at the, you know, we had, we're making a quote right now, with everyone's names that passed away that were bringing to the Capitol. And we have names on those, they're fourteen-year-olds. So you can kinda, kinda look at things and see, those probably didn't, your eighteen-year-olds probably didn't have much experience with treatment. But, you know, as far as those go, we're never gonna know. Yeah, plain and simple. You know, but the more chances, that's why we're big proponents and talk a lot about Good Samaritan and Loxan. Because if you can keep people, if you keep people alive long enough, you see, you know, the chances of getting, kind of covered, even if it's six or seven times the treatment like we all did.
Would that Good Samaritan law, the nine eleven Good Samaritan law, is that just for the people that have overdosed and used the drug? If they won't get possession, or the person that calls it as well?
The person that calls them. In Illinois, it covers, you have up to four grams of heroin on you. Four grams of, I mean, it, it covers every drug, because your criminal statute did it very explicitly here in Illinois. So, you know, it's not gonna cover maybe manufacturing, distribution, other crimes, you know, it just covers possession. So it covers every, every drug that's meant is in that, in that law, maybe in the house.
Is that included if they have, if the person that calls has it in their system too, they won't get any in for it?
No. And they're not gonna, they're not gonna go and drug, you know.
That's possession, that means if, you know, you two are partying, you go out, I walk in as a law enforcement official, and I see up to four grams on the table, it doesn't mean you're gonna get put in handcuffs. It means that four grams of heroin is going with me, it is illegal. But you're not gonna be prosecuted, is, is basically what that law is saying. And when the police deal with that, they're, like I said, they're not gonna leave drugs and paraphernalia sitting there.
By the time the cops get there, they think it's drug. They're not finding my dope, if I have seven minutes before they get there. But the fear is still there that they could find the dope, that they're gonna arrest my friend, you know.
And they don't call it dope for, I mean, if, if, if you're busy, you can lose sight in that crisis, thinking my buddy's gonna die. You just forgot you left all your dope on the table, you know, so.
Just to protect people, because, you know, even law enforcement, from my understanding, am I talking with them, does support this? Because they do put value over human life, over the statistics of people passing away. If you stay out the longer, if they're gonna catch your case, you know, it's a possession case, you know, it's not, it's not, you know, what was it, El Capitan?
I wanted to bring up that Bethany Place in Belleville.
Yes.
I called up there, ten to fifteen minutes is all it takes for them to train you about using the shot. And they will give you the shot to take with you that day, there's no charge for it. So if anyone feels they have an addict in their house, and they're worried they're gonna overdose on their watch, it'd be better to have it with you than to not.
Our goal as an organization is that when you go to the ER and you get a script for Vicodin, you're also getting a script for Narcan. They should go hand in hand, especially with the amount of deaths we have.
Yes.
It's, it's not only a needle administration, Narcan can be scored up your nose. There's various straws of administration, it's not only a needle, so it's not the ball fiction in the chest.
No, that was, that doesn't even work. Yes, Chris.
I have a simple question, you said there's five hundred deaths, was it a year? I was just wondering if that is in Missouri, or is that?
Um, that is my numbers from Missouri, but that is a pretty, uh.
For Missouri?
That's Missouri.
Wow.
But that is a gen, the numbers I have for the research that is being done is Illinois, Missouri, Massachusetts, Ohio, we're having, we're seeing these problems. But you know, you look at somewhere like California, San Francisco, you know, they have more. I mean, these are, that's a general overview of what's happening in the United States right now, but if you just forget the five hundred every nineteen minutes. So in the time that I, we've been up here talking, you know, three people have died.
And a lot of people from Monroe County do not believe that we have any kinda heroin problem. Oh, I, I realize that, but the thing of it is, we not only have a heroin product, but we, a, a problem, but we also have a great potential to really increase that, because, because of these drugs. Like, like Erica said before, City of Columbia and City of Wetherspoons both have a drug, uh, drug box dropped, and no questions asked. The thing of it is, the trend in, in Monroe County right now is for kids to have pill parties. And what they do is they go clean out medicine cabinets, dump them in a bowl, pass them around till they pass out. And, and that is, I mean, the beginning stages of what you all are really talking about. So, so if you got any pill yourself, number one, when, when you get prescription drugs like that, you're supposed to use every one, is the way you're really supposed to do it. If you don't, you need to go out the next day, because the potential just keeps increasing and increasing on these things.
We're gonna kinda wrap it up here. We'll be around for a little bit if you have any questions, and you wanna ask something, we'll be here for a little bit, for sure.
We're trying to get you to.
And I'll, I'll say something. We are having deaths here in the county from heroin. I'm Chief Bethany, I'm the coroner's office here in Monroe County. But I will say we are seeing an increase year after year. And it does start out with the prescription drugs, as you guys had mentioned. What we do as a coroner's office is, we will take, even when we have death, even of an eligible person, we will take all the prescription drugs out of the medicine cabinet and dispose of them at the police departments. So, that's, that's number one thing, is just get those drugs out of the house. Don't give the kids the option of taking those drugs, prescriptions anyway. But it is here, we are having deaths from it. Well, the ones we've had as far as deaths, they've been in their twenties. But we have missed out on a lot of deaths here, because they're transported to some of those kind of places.
When, you know, people die, you know, here is, we can't wait to, we don't, just because we go to St. Louis to get our dope, isn't there a reason here? If you live here, they sometimes can't wait, so it's, that's a whole other place. And another, I know we touched on this at all, but also the South, there's another prescription drug that is overused, overprescribed, and is hurting kids, is the benzodiazepine, X-Valu, Ativan. Those are also, because they create almost the same sedation effect, because it hits the same receptors in the brain as alcohol and opiates. They're also a, a huge concern, and we have time to move to everything, but I think Melissa had something.
That's what I was gonna say real quick, if you think like your child's been into your pills, like I, I looked at anybody's medicine cabinet, I went, anybody's house I was at, my parents, like, you know, that's, count your pills and keep them hidden, like the Xanax, you know. I was, I would look for any kind of denzo, and Adderall's bad too. I know we're here for heroin, but the Adderall, the Ritalin, any kinda narcotic pain medicine, that's what we look for as addicts. And it didn't matter who you were, I could have been visiting somebody, you know, anybody's house, and I'm in here medicine business, so.
I'm actually from St. Charles County, and out there, I went through town hall for them at a high school. And they, the actual CEO of Brideway, which is a treatment center out there, and there's one in St. Louis and one in Westville. There was actually fifteen and sixteen-year-old kids that were busted, a big group of them, probably like ten or fifteen of them. Because in all the nice neighborhoods, they would go into the open houses, where they would sell, sell houses and have people come in. They were having those kids go raid all the medicine cabinets and take all the prescription pills out. And, I mean, there was a lot of them that were, you know, stuck in juvie, and they spent summers in juvie, and I mean, it was happening every summer. Or every, all, when the nice weather came out, and all the nice open houses came out, this was just a huge trend. And I mean, that just goes to show you how desperate, because you have teenagers walking into open houses stealing, you know, prescription pills. And that just goes to show you how big of an epidemic it really is, everywhere.
Why are there still a number two and nine J for their own ears involved in this real quick? Is it just the money that can be made? Everyone knows what actually caffeine is, it's a heroin-based drug. It's sold for, usually on the street for a dollar a milligram, and they go up to a hundred and sixty milligrams, so you're like, a hundred and sixty bucks for one pill.
Are you guys targeting the drug dealers, or say, the guys that supply the heroin, do you have a target?
No, because we can't, I work for some filmmakers over the summer in a documentary, they have enough, and this is just Afghanistan, which doesn't even come here, it comes to other parts. But there's a, just, this is the only factual proof I know, that they turned out every property field in Afghanistan right now, they already have enough heroin made to support them. made to support the war for seven years.
And that being said, though, do we have a supplier here that we should be targeting? Columbia and Waterford?
Not, not anybody.
Monroe County alone, yeah.
If you take down one, five, or six, like you said, if we cannot do anything about the supply, but if we can remove the demand, get the addicts clean, and keep the new ones from picking up, just to find the answer, you know, our, our expertise is recovery, addiction, and how it happens, we'll leave that to our enforcement.
The DEA does do period buys, once a, once a year for sure, and, uh, they found that most of the heroin in Missouri and Illinois is coming from Mexico, nice, up through the borders, and like probably 44 is a big, big drug and addiction highway, so it's long for it.
That supply is out there for, there's enough out there, and that's just one area that's produced, because you have Vietnam, Mexico, South America, something like that, small pocket in Afghanistan, they have seven, or eight, maybe, it's coming, there's nothing you do about it coming in, from our standpoint, so what we can do is save the ones, save the people who are getting sick.
One last thing, as an educator myself, what age do y'all see this starting at?
We have middle schools.
Name the, say the age.
Yeah, but, six and seven, eight.
Eleven, twelve, thirteen, eleven, twelve, thirteen.
And progression, starts at eleven, twelve, thirteen, by seventeen, eighteen, maybe sixteen, through up to eighteen.
From thirteen to seventeen?
Even eleven and twelve.
Eleven and twelve, thirteen, yes.
Great, eleven, twelve, you know, that's just not fifth grade, I'll open your school and play.
I also have sex. And you can start Adderall, uh, ADHD medications, because it's, it's stimulants, um, but, uh, then it quits working, and then they move on to other things.
Sure, we'll be around for a little bit.
But I would like to thank the Polans Club for having us. Thank you.
So I'm just, just, just to wrap this up...